So we'll get started on the Great Barrington Planning Board meeting for Thursday, May 11th. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. And Governor Healy's March 29, 2023 revised order extending remote participation by all members in any meeting of a public body. This meeting of the Planning Board will be conducted both in person and via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties with a right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website. For this meeting, members of the public and committee members may attend the meeting in person, or for those who wish to do so remotely may by following instructions on the agenda. For those who are not in person, every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In addition, pursuant to MGL 7C 30A, Section 20F, after notifying the Chair of the Public Body, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of a public body, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. At the beginning of the meeting, the Chair shall inform other attendees of any such recordings. Any members of the public wishing to speak at the meeting must receive permission of the Chair. The listings of the agenda items are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. And finally, per Section 241-1 of the Town Code, except for procedural and housekeeping matters, town residents shall have the right to address a board on any item that requires a vote at a time before a board votes on that item. Such residents will be allowed as much time as the proponents of an item is permitted to have. Alright, so we will do a roll call attendance. Pedro Pachano?
Here.
Jeremy Ega?
Here.
Jonathan Hankin?
I am here.
Jackie Kane?
Here.
Malcolm Fick?
Uh, here but not voting.
Okay, great. And Brandy Nelson, here. Alright, great. So our first order of business is reorganization, election of officers. Do we have anyone who's interested in being the Chair?
Yes. I move Brandy for Chair, second.
Third.
There may be other nominations.
I'll pick back my third.
No other nomination.
Alright, I'd be honored. I appreciate all the support you all give me. So, um, any further discussions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Pedro?
Hi.
Jeremy?
Hi.
Jonathan?
Hi.
Brandy, I? Great, we'll move on. Vice Chair, do we have a a motion to nominate a Vice Chair?
Pedro, nominate Pedro for Vice Chair.
Second.
And a second?
A race?
So, is there a race?
Is there a race for it?
No.
Okay, hearing none, um, uh, we'll vote. Jeremy? I did.
I.
I vote I as well.
And I vote I.
Jonathan, I. Brandy, I. Alright, great. Um, do we have a motion to nominate a clerk? Jonathan, wanna be the?
Go for a, uh, nominate, uh, Jonathan to be the clerk.
Jonathan, do we have a second?
Pedro? You want a second then?
I'll second that. Just crossing out the C-L and putting a J.
Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none. Pedro, how do you vote?
Hi.
Jonathan?
Uh.
Jeremy?
I.
Brandy, I. Okay, great. What a lively group we are. Okay, so now we need to appoint representatives. Um, do we have a, um, motion to renominate Jeremy as the representative to the CPC?
So move.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Pedro?
Hi.
Jonathan?
Hi.
Jeremy?
Hi.
Brandy, I. Alright, do we have a motion to nominate? Someone help me with this one. So BRPC, I believe Malcolm would be our representative and?
No, Pedro would be the representative and I'm the alternate. And the Select Board already voted last night to approve, uh, Pedro and myself for BRPC.
In that same order?
Uh, in whatever order the Select Board chooses, I guess. They didn't specify.
Well, in point of fact, it's the Planning Board's role to nominate and elect the delegate. It's the Select Board's role to recommend the alternate. So it's great that the Select Board is in favor of the delegate, but it's the Planning Board's point.
So, so what you're saying is either could be the alternate.
So to this board.
So I nominate Pedro as the, uh, delegate.
Thank, thank you, Jonathan. Do we have a, a motion and a second to nominate Pedro as delegate? Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none. Pedro, how do you vote?
Hi.
Jonathan, how do you vote?
I.
Jeremy, your vote?
I.
Brandy, I. Thank you. Do we have a motion to nominate Malcolm as the alternate? Or do we need?
Second.
Okay.
We don't do that, do we?
Yeah.
We do recommend.
Recommend.
Recommending.
Alright, any discussion? Hearing none. Pedro, your vote?
Hi.
Jonathan?
Hi.
Jeremy?
Hi.
Brandy, I. Alright. What do we do with the Design Advisory Committee, folks? Do we? I guess, Chris, procedurally, we need a representative because it still technically exists?
Even though it hasn't met in probably a year?
Um, I believe that's true. It hasn't been, you know, it's established by the zoning bylaw, so it's, it exists unless it's, uh,
Okay.
Blown out by two thirds. Let me just check the membership.
Did you notice there's a, uh, a neon sign that went up at, at the 20 Road?
Is there? Inside option?
And it didn't come to the Design Advisory here.
Which one is 20?
Uh, DAC has one Planning Board member appointed by the Planning Board, so go ahead, Brandy.
Okay, so, um, are there any individuals on the board who would like to be on the DAC? Or should we come up and appoint Jonathan?
If no one wants to do it, I'll do it, but it's, it's no fun.
But we're not meeting.
Yeah, can?
Yeah, Jackie could be.
Jackie too?
Yeah, let's make Jackie the, the Design Advisory.
Alright, we have a motion to appoint Jack.
On that, you can.
And Jeremy, you seconded?
Yes.
Okay, do we have any further discussion?
No.
You, you can.
No.
How do we vote? Pedro?
Well, we should let Jackie. Was Jackie trying to say something?
Yeah.
She was trying to talk, kind of, but, um, no, I was wondering what does the Design Advisory Board, what do you want me to do on the Design Advisory?
Nothing. That's what the board does.
I will look at the responsibility.
It's in the zoning bylaw. It's to basically review the, the mandate of the DAC is liquor store to liquor store. So the domain is to the tribes.
That's assuming I know where, okay.
Okay, domains to the tribe. And so that's, uh, encompasses the, um, those, uh, Village Center overlay district.
It's, and the B two.
And the B, well. And so you look at any, any project that's going to involve reconstruction, new construction, or.
Expansion or alterations of more than 200.
Primarily, primarily in the exterior of the buildings, it goes through the DAC. And the DAC reviews it. Usually what happens at the DAC is the committee meets and they give criticism and advice to the applicants. But it's all on advisory, uh, status, so you don't have to, yeah, they don't have to accept it. But, um, they listen to it and it's a chance for the town, basically. It was established for, to have, please, where the town can have a say in projects that basically don't get special permits or that never hear anything like that.
Well, thank you all very much. I'd be honored to serve.
Alright.
Excellent, great. So, um, with the motion and the second, we'll do the vote. Pedro?
Hi.
Jonathan?
Hi.
Jeremy?
Hi.
Brandy, I.
My is a big, big I.
And last, um, uh, appoint a representative to Lake Nantucket House Force. Continue doing that. So Jonathan, you'll make that motion?
I'll move second.
Bye, Jeremy. Any discussion? Hearing none. Pedro, your vote?
Hi.
Jonathan?
Hi.
Jeremy?
Hi.
Brandy, I. Okay, great. Thanks, everybody.
Do we have to reorganize for Housing Subcommittee?
I was just looking that up. I don't think so.
Okay.
Terms are in depth.
It's the lifetime appointment.
It seems to rotate, actually.
Alright, so next up on our agenda are the formates. Do we have any formates?
No.
No formates, so we'll move on to the minutes of April 27th. Do we have a motion to approve as amended?
So move, second.
Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you, Jeremy. We have any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Pedro?
Hi.
Jonathan?
Hi.
Jeremy?
Hi.
Brandy, I. Okay, so let's see. There was an email that went around with some information. I believe Jackie, you brought this forward, or, or was it you, Pedro? Um, some thoughts on? Go ahead.
Is about a housing forum?
Yes.
So what, I sent that around. Do you want, do you want me to talk about it a little bit, or what do you want to do?
Asked for it to be included on the agenda, and so we put it under the General Discussion on Housing Strategies. Did you want to just share what your thinking was? You know, we can't deliberate.
Okay, no, I'd be, I'd be glad to share the idea as, um, I came here from LA. One of the organizations I respect tremendously in Los Angeles is the Hammer Museum. Not only because it's a preeminent contemporary art museum affiliated with UCLA, it is also very involved in community organization and activities and social justice issues. So 20 years ago, they were holding forums on wither downtown LA. They, during COVID, held amazing Zoom meetings for the country to deal with issues that we all wanted to address at that time. They, um, this is right in the wheelhouse, what they're doing. I think it's very smart. What it is, is it's a forum about LA's housing crisis. What attracted me to this is the fact that it is number one, the Hammer. I think they're a tremendous convener, respected in the community, and they bring everybody together to deal with issues in a nonpartisan, fairly civil discourse way. And I was attracted to that because it wasn't a political group. It was a group that grounded in the community and has the community's respect. Then I saw that they were doing four different topics over one a month. It wasn't like, let's all sit down together at once and for a weekend, address housing. It allowed for thoughtful discussion once a month for four months. And they brought in people to talk about LA's issues who were involved in it, and also were involved in other being larger activities and smaller activities. It ran from hyperlocal to national considerations. And I thought, this is an interesting model for us to consider, because I saw this right after the town meeting. And I was listening to people's reactions to some of the planning proposals, and there are all sorts of the housing issues that I think we, this might be a very good venue to raise issues and questions and invite people in to talk. I mean, to actually raise a little money to fly people in who are doing this. But it, I think it's a chance to pull together some pretty, I think it's a needed fresh way to discuss housing issues and the things that are coming up in this fiscal year.
So Jackie, just for my own clarification, is your suggestion to, um, have us host a forum that is modeled off of, um, the Hammer style? Or is it for us to participate in this forum and kind of listen and learn?
I would like to see us, I don't want us to host it or be the convener, because that's why I'm saying I'd like the Hammer as this outside entity. I was thinking that I would love to see a convener like a foundation or an academic institution, the newspaper, a think tank, or something else. Not us. That's one of the things I liked about the Hammer model, because it was a, a different kind of an institution. Um, and I think that we would be, you know, there's, has to be a group that's going to be sitting there addressing the issues that we need to address and talking about who would be on the panels, and also who would be the moderator. So I would see the Planning Board certainly wanting to participate in that process. It does not mean that we would be running it. We would just be engaged with it and certainly raising desire to talk about key issues that we'll be facing.
Is, is anyone aware, I'm asking the group of us, is anyone aware of a, a nonprofit organization that's already doing this kind of work, say, in the county? I think we'd have to go farther than Great Barrington to find the, the depth of maybe outreach and knowledge, but, um, is anybody aware of anything? I, I can't think of anything.
Well, I sent you the Housing, the Berkshire's Coalition of Change.
Right.
Which is having a May 24th event.
It's CHAPA.
Yeah.
So you have C-H-A-P-A, CHAPA. That's the organization brand.
Okay.
And what is that, small one?
Citizens Housing and Planning Association.
And they've been doing this, this is like the second one?
Yeah.
But it's been, it's, this has been going on for about two years with BRPC, though. And CHAPA organized this about a year ago. But before that, BRPC had mostly Berkshire County, well, all of Berkshire County, uh, kind of thought leaders that they invited to, to participate was them and on Berkshire. And it's grown to this.
Now, who attends? Because I'm thinking this is very much for the public, the citizens of Great Barrington. And not just people who are insiders who are addressing the housing issue.
The Coalition.
Is that right?
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, I felt the desire to participate in something like this and step outside of the normal discussions and hear from other people who are, I mean, you talk from time to time, Pedro, about bringing somebody in to discuss X issue or Y issue. And this might be, I mean, another way to do that and bring in somebody who's dealing with like a fellow who wrote, wrote that parking book and gives you a whole nother way of thinking about it. Maybe it becomes not just listening to ourselves, but a chance to bring in somebody from other cities that are models for Great Barrington, or who've had that try, you know, like the Select Board just gave us a bunch of things that they, how do we do this? What about charging this or doing that or doing this? And they make reference to other towns that have tried it. Well, maybe we, you know, this would be a venue in which we could bring somebody in from that town to join the discussion that we're having now. So I just see it as being, um, something that is not that, I don't know, I don't know whether something like this is actually happening, but I just felt like I would really personally benefit from it as a citizen.
So, okay, I think that's an interesting idea. I think there's a lot of different ways you could go. I, I, I for one personally like panel discussions of broad groups of people as a means of getting a, a range of inputs on issues. So like, for instance, I could see a scenario where it'd be interesting, in my opinion, to have like feedback from someone from the hospital and someone from the school district, you know, like major employers, like what are the issues they find in hiring people and housing their staff? And then maybe people from the local, um, entities that are focused on housing, like Construct or, or CDC. Um, and maybe someone from BRPC. I mean, i- if we wanted to dial it into a, a, a more local, community-based opportunity to kind of educate the public on the issue? Um, I, I think Jackie, it probably needs like a little more kicking around to think about what you'd want to achieve.
Oh, I totally, I brought forward, because I was looking at the structure more than the content. I'm thinking it's an interesting vessel to put ideas into. Because I mean, I went, you could, you know, how detailed do we want to get in dealing with specific issues that we discussed at the town meeting? Or, and so there's so many different ways to look at this, and if I had, if I could, I would just say, let's could we just talk about it off, well, I don't know how we talk about, can we plan? This is open meeting rules. Can we plan for something like this or discuss what's possible amongst ourselves? Um, prepping for the next meeting, and that would be okay, because it's not policy or anything?
Or do you? You can't have discussions amongst the, a quorum of, of the members, no.
So, oh, two people.
Two people.
Well.
Well, we can do it now. We can do it now.
Yeah, but is, is anybody ready, or do you want to bring it back and put? I, I mean, also, I could go around and talk to people individually, one-on-one, and collect data and share it. I just don't know how this works. But if, you know, frankly, I don't take it personally. If you all say, ah, that takes a soft point, we're not really interested in this. This is not what we want to do. This is not what we do. Or Jackie, go with God and come back with a plan. I don't know how you want to think about that. And I won't take it personally. I just don't like you anymore.
Can I jump in very briefly?
Yes, Malcolm.
The, the Housing Subcommittee has actually included this as one of the items that needs to be done, but it also, um, is listed as one of those things that needs somebody to do it. Um, you know, the Housing Cup Subcommittee cannot convene, uh, you know, such a thing as Jackie's describing, and uh, so I, I, I support where Jackie's going on this. Uh, it's really a question, I think, of, uh, uh, you know, figuring out the details and, and finding, you know, where the right fit is to, for somebody to sponsor such a thing, even if it's a group of sponsors.
Is, is the Housing Subcommittee, Malcolm, is it specific? Is there, is your thinking specific, or is it along the lines of Jackie, that this would be a good, um, a good venue, a good way to have a community conversation? Is that as specific as you get so far?
I mean, you know, what we were, uh, positing was more of a, a seminar or symposium. But I mean, there was no details included. Uh, because, you know, I mean, we're not in a position to come up with the details, but I, I, I think Jackie's suggestion advances that idea.
I think it was, it sounded similar to what Brandy was saying.
So, yeah, I mean, I guess I would like to work backwards from what would our objective be? Is it education? Is it engagement? Is it, is it outreach? Is it, is it a combination? Like, what do we want to achieve if we're going to move forward with it? And, and I'm in principle supportive of the concept. I just want to understand what, what our goal would be, and then kind of work backwards from there, you know, the who and the what, and then the how.
And is it strictly related to housing, or is it related to anything zoning-wise?
I would, um, I, I would not make it about zoning, but broader conceptual thing, like housing might be, you might get into transportation, but, um, I'm, I wouldn't get.
Yeah, but I don't know. I, I had the coffee with Julie Anjar, and, and one of the things, she said that, at town meeting, when the zoning articles, articles come up, it's way too complicated. And no one's read it, and, and, and she suggested that there be some kind of community outreach other than public hearings, uh, which no one goes, uh, to just try and get information out there. And this could be alive in, in somewhere.
So that's why you have four different sessions. One could indeed focus on this and make it, and I'm, I'm really interested in the education without being hitting over the head or arguing about it, you know, just like, let's explore these ideas. And if somebody's saying they, their eyes glaze over because they really don't know what we're saying at these town meetings in particular, or they don't understand the B2 zone or something, it's like, I think that's an interesting idea.
So I work with an organization in Duchess County called the Duchess County Planning Federation. It's over um, in New York, like in the Poughkeepsie area. And we do workshops that are normally geared towards people that are on boards, like the Planning Board or the Zoning Board. But there are, um, lots of like 101 type classes, like understanding zoning, 101, understanding the approval process, you know, things like that, that are kind of baseline educational. So, you know, there's a scenario that we could think about, um, but I wonder, Chris, if maybe what we should do to tackle this is to, um, schedule our meeting with the Select Board to sort of review where we are with the comp plan implementation and see if any issues sort of bubble out of that and rise up as sort of the bigger things we need to focus on?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, Brandy. I think it certainly would involve the Select Board and multiple other boards, the CPA, maybe for funding, the Housing Trust, obviously, and others, um, and whether it's just about housing or whether there are additional sessions about other topics. It could be a, a really interesting way to start community conversations that lead into a master plan update.
I was gonna ask.
You know, they probably do on that anyway. Yeah, a, a year or two of remembering that we're all sort of more alike than we are is similar, and we're all wanting to work towards common goals. I think this sort of series has that potential.
Yeah.
And I think that's, I think that's a good, good thing to strive for, um, and set the basis to so that we can update with the master plan and, and after that. Or something.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a big ask. I think it's, I think it's worth thinking about. There's a lot of potential.
Yeah, definitely. Alright, well, I will, um, I don't, just to select, do you, are you aware, Chris, of the Select Board has a lot on their agenda in the coming month or two?
They do, uh, and I want to say that on Tuesday, June 13th, they're having a strategic planning session. So if the Subcommittee, maybe the Housing Subcommittee meets before that, maybe this is something that you all discuss. The Select Board members maybe then are poised to raise it, um, and put it in front of the Select Board to vote on. Um, it's really important for the Select Board to set policies because they provide the direction to the Town Manager and, and by extension, myself and other staff, so that's an important session to work towards.
The Select Board Strategic Planning?
Right. So it's strategic policies, priorities for the, for the day. It's an open meeting, yeah. They meet, they, they've been doing that about every six months, and it's like, okay, this six months, we're gonna focus on A, B, and C. You know, ha- housing is always on that. It'd be nice to have have that teed out a little bit more. So that, that may be the first session where it comes up. It, it gets, it gets named, it gets discussed, and it gets listed.
Okay.
If you haven't a chance to talk with Steve about a joint Planning Board Select Board session, but that, maybe that happens in June or July or soon.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. And no, I haven't, but I, you know, I think now that we're through town meeting, um, it, it would be important to have that conversation. So I'll, I'll reach out to Steve before our next meeting and, um, bring a report back to the board.
Assuming he's still the Chair.
He is.
True.
Last night.
Yeah, no real chance.
Okay, okay. All right, good. Um, anything else on this item before we move on?
I, I want to ask Jackie what the items were telling me and then to your attention, the things that were discussed.
I would be, um, B2 by right. I had Eileen sitting right behind me and, I mean, I could hear her inhale. Um, when by right was said and saying that, what does that mean? And I, and she voted for it, but she said, you know, I'm just working and I want, I'll be watching or something like that. But there is, I, you saw how that, there's discussion around that, other issues. I wrote them down, actually. Um, well, SDR domain issue, uh, public-private partnerships, I wrote down because like that went down, but we were all voting for it in, in favor of that. Um, enforcement issues, like we worry about, um, okay, if it's by right, but we're counting on site plan review and force of, um,
Well, the building department.
Building. And, and so what are, what does enforcement mean? How do we actually do enforcement without, you know, becoming an enforcement state? So that's another issue I had. I had civil discourse, just how do we, you know, I'm, I've just been wandering around feeling badly about the tenor of some of the discussions that we've been having and, um, and and surprised by it. And I'd love to see if there's some way that we just kind of learn how to talk about issues that we disagree about and be able to reflect on them. And, and I was just thinking that this was an opportunity to also do that in a way without being inside of a large, I keep looking at him, but you're the one who asked the question. Basically, um.
When she talks about soul of this question.
Well, I think it was like the moderator.
So, I mean, it's, it's that, that was another issue. So those are the ones I pull more.
For the record, when I brought up fake news, it was an joke and Eileen and I have been talking about this for couple days and, um, and it was kind of an inside joke. I think that, um, you know, it's whatever the issue is, whether it's a capital budget request or a strange land acquisition article or a, or an arcane zoning article at town meeting, it, it's literally impossible to educate voters enough because it's the nature of, of town meeting and, and New England town government is people show up fresh.
And you have three minutes.
Yeah, and, you know, I, I love when people come and I love when people are engaged and they're not afraid to engage. They don't. It, to, to me, it's horrible when somebody says, well, I haven't been following this. I'm not an expert. I'm just not going to go. I don't like that. Of course, then I don't like that people show up and they, they don't know us. So there's got to be some way to achieve the middle ground, um. But I think it's, I think it's kind of impossible to, to get at every fact, but I think having, having discourse, having civil discourse and conversations and at least getting out there and having conversations where people begin to understand the goals of select board, the planning board, um, it can build a little bit of trust so that the discourse at least is more civil, even if not everybody will ever understand the intricacies of zoning.
That's the thing, zoning is impossible to explain.
Sometimes it's hard to understand.
Yeah, it is too, right now. It's, uh, it's very complicated. And if you're not looking at it every day, you're not going to get it, no matter how many sessions you sit through. But on the house, you know, the housing, you know, the housing education, I mean, I did, I take this idea just to, I had this thought that maybe we should go around the room and just each one, one of us have a, a, a comment about what could be potentially the subject. And if we, we were to do that, and I'm not, I'm only the vice chair here, I'm not directing that. But if we were to do that, I mean, you know, what I would say is that the, the one piece of education that I think is really crucial to explain the housing problem is its effect on the economy, it, it's effect on mobility, entrepreneurship, that sort of thing. I don't know that people really get that. And the idea that the value of their lives here and the value of their properties and their investments in town is really not predicated on the land really that they live on for the most part, but predicated on the success of the town. So, you know, it's that kind of education that I think would be crucial, would be important, crucial, but, you know, important to, to get out and have discussions around that subject.
They need that when they talk about the school. Because people often think the school is just educating the people we have, but they don't see it as the driver for economic.
See the importance of the school when they don't have children in it.
But it, but in the end, it affects the value of the property.
Sure, and the, and the success of the town.
Well, the success of the town, direct, I mean, directly goes to them affecting their property.
It's those issues. I mean, I think, I think, um, having discussions about affordability and lack of housing and second homeowners and that sort of thing, I don't know, would be so exciting or so interesting because we've had so many discussions around those subjects. But then, but to have discussions around the sort of periphery or the, the tangential effects of, of the housing issue, I think would be really interesting.
Well, the article that Brandy, I'm sorry, the article that Brandy brought forward about the parking.
Yeah.
It's just the required number of, of parking spaces per house or per unit or per the importations of what that we need or I think is really important to understand.
I'm happy to be key to the speaker than that one. Ready.
We have to strike the balance, right? Because not, it, it, it's like a, it's a chain reaction, right? Like, in a place where you don't need a car, you have a couple of things typically. You have a density of, you know, services that people need for their day-to-day that are available to you within walking distance. Or the second thing that we don't all have is, is reliable public transportation, right? And absent that, you get caught in the car trap. And that is definitely where I think we are right now, is that because of a number of factors, the type of economic opportunities in our community and the type of housing in our community, people, there's a mismatch between the housing and the, the jobs. And so people are having to travel and, and there's not public transportation. So you do need a car, right?
Yeah, I thought one of the interesting from that fresh air episode, um, was the idea of how free parking affects it, how free abundant parking, how that changes all of our habits around it and, and our perception of parking because we're used to free abundant parking, or at least. And so, I mean, we, I don't think we're going to change, you know, the dependence upon the automobile, but if you change the, the kind of by right parking, that you, you can change the behavior around it, right? And, and we can get to a better place with parking where, you know, there, maybe there's more shared parking and, you know, and so parking is, the parking spaces are utilized for more things than, you know, than they are now.
The automobile is the only form of transportation that doesn't pay for it.
Well, and that could change, but that's not this board's purview, so. It good, I think is a good discussion. I'll follow up with Steve about, um, a joint meeting. Um, I'll do that in the next couple of weeks. And Jackie, uh, you know, keep thinking or maybe you start thinking about a framework and we can bring this up again, um, at an, at a future meeting.
One of the things that is our purview though, is this idea of shared parking. I mean, that, that was part of that. And that idea, I mean, we don't really, it's not really in our zoning that that's a possibility when commercial development comes in, you know, and they have a certain number of spaces required. Um, we're not saying that they can share parking with their neighbor, you know, or that there could be some kind of that, you know, so that, I think there's a possibility there for zoning.
Um, to be clear, I, this board shouldn't be concerned about, you know, just, just limiting your discussion to what you can put into zoning. You're, you're the planning for, planning is
Yeah, we.
Big topic.
And we could, we have a lot of power with.
You're zoning this year and you could just have general planning discussions if you want. Um, not everything needs to be encoded into zoning.
See, I think what Pedro said felt like a breath of fresh air on the discussion of housing. Me, maybe because I stepped out of zoning for a minute. And you, you get, it's a, it's a bigger frame. It's another way to look at an issue and, and that always helps.
And that's how you can get people to show up to these things too. And people, you know, I mean, people start at town meeting, they begin to realize they have some skin in the game. And then they get really interested in it. And so like that, you know, how you can tie, you know, these regular issues during the year to, you know, how it relates to them and how it relates. I mean, it's all about, I guess it's, a lot of it's about property, but it's a people to show up.
All right, great. Thank you. Okay, anything else? Or well, let's see, I guess we can move on to board and subcommittee updates.
I had, I had another, because we kind of, I, master plan was on my list of things, but we kind of got into that. Um, I was wondering about, I guess this question for Chris, is there like a mechanism for, um, like updating complete streets, like, you know, where we're at? Do we need to like, you know, call for that committee reform again and create a new plan? Or update the plan? Okay, so maybe I can.
Yeah, that's another general topic that affects the livability and the health and welfare of the town in general. That this board could tackle. Transportation, walking, so-called complete streets. You could tackle open space recreation plan, which I have to tackle. Um, love your help. Um, anything that's in the master plan, you know, there were like twelve different topics or chapters in that plan, including transportation, including energy, including housing, including development. These are all within your project. It doesn't necessarily have to be a zoning topic. So, you know, I'll check that one out and maybe report that. The last time that you convened the complete streets committee was that, uh, because there was some funding opportunities in place or it's just something that, that was part of the master plan to do? It was in the master plan. It sort of said, let's look at all streets and figure out how to do the mass quote-unquote complete streets for all transportation nodes. Then the committee convened in order to make a plan and that plan continues to form the basis of our complete street grant, grant applications, which have been generally successful, so.
You can buy it yearly?
So we shot, and, and I can update, maybe I'll update before the next meeting.
Last thing I had on my list is, I don't know, after the AG, um, goes through all of our, our town meeting things, but I don't know if we want to, do you want to look at the wireless 5G thing?
Town meeting already decided.
Well, I know, but a part of what we do is, um, update bylaws and so do we want to, after we hear what the AG says about it?
We have to get Jack to come back.
Well, we could, we could hire him as a, like a consultant. I don't know.
So I don't know where this falls, but, uh, having just seen what happened on Northland Road. You know, I'm so disappointed in both the Affordable Housing Trust and the select board. First of all, the select board never, never reviewed the plans. There was never any discussion on the plans whatsoever. I don't know why, the special permit granting authority. And then the, I think we need people on the Affordable Housing Trust that are actually involved in planning because there's no one there who knows anything about it.
A couple architects on there.
Couple?
Or one at least.
And does he know anything about planning? Well, he thinks that, well, the select board should be the special parent.
So what are you suggesting?
I, I think it needs to be reorganized because I think you really need people that care about planning and, and have ideas about it. And right now it's all people that don't know anything.
That is probably a, a bigger topic, but maybe something to raise in the joint meeting with the select board, Jonathan. If we can do it in, in a constructive way.
You mean that I can't open my mouth?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying like, I think we want to come at it with like concrete suggestions.
Maybe there's a, a plan where members, the, part of part of the committee.
It should be.
I mean, it's not, uh, just about every other, you know, committee or subcommittee has members of different boards on it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, if you're gonna yeah, if you're gonna really fund it, then it probably makes sense that it had members of different, there's different town boards on it. I mean, you can just expand.
Okay, I think we could discuss that at a future meeting. Um, and making a recommendation. Yeah, go ahead, Malcolm.
Um, so soon as I speak. Yeah. I'm, I'm the alternate. I'm the select representative on BRPC, so. Um, uh, the nominated committee is, uh, putting forward my name, thank you, Pedro, uh, for, uh, BRPC Chair this year. Uh, so I'm trying to figure out what I'm not going to be doing for the next year or two.
You're not elected yet.
Does that mean?
You're right.
Meaning you're not going to be sitting on the Affordable Housing Trust anytime soon.
I'm sorry, Brandy, I missed that.
No, I, I was curious what you were thinking you were going to need to cut, like or golfing.
Uh, well, we won't go there, but that's.
Can't do that.
Malcolm, if, if that goes forward and you're the chair, I think you would be really, really good at it.
Well, I'm looking forward to it. And there's a lot of committees that, uh, I would be sitting on, so it's, it'll be.
Yeah, definitely.
As far as I know, I think it's probably the first time ever that GB's rep has been the chair that I know of. I gotta tell you that it's, what I, you know, the comment I'd make about it is that, um, Charlie Malcolm would basically be the you'll be definitely the sole representative of South County in, in the sort of board hierarchy there, for sure. But most of the people there are Pittsfield and North. Most of, most of the people really who have, I think, and from my experience who, who, um, participate and have some sort of pool on the committee or in the commission, they're mostly from North County. So I'm thrilled that Malcolm's going to take.
And, and it's really the committees, uh, are the, the driver there on a lot of things. Uh, you know, the, the, the tip, uh, uh, every year or, you know, every year and uh, I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of committees that, um, uh, the chair sits on as a, as a, as a member or executive member, so I'll be participating in those.
Great.
And that, Malcolm, you won't be doing it. So Malcolm, you won't be doing any more walking tours? Are you using that?
Depends. That is one of those things I wasn't planning on doing this year.
Well, I got a couple of things. Um, one related to a meeting, I would just like to commend Malcolm for kind of showing up as the adult in the room, at least on the two items that I presented. Um, I thank you for that because I don't know what happened to me at this time meeting, but I I had just way too much energy, was way too amped up and and I don't even know how I came across, but Malcolm was there to to really hammer hammer down on the basic or not the basis, the most important points of what we were proposing. So thank you, Malcolm, for that.
Thanks, Pedro. And I I I think you did a good job in introducing the topic and that's what we need to do.
So the other things, today I had this discussion with um with uh June or Jane Ralphs, with Eileen and with Carol Boska Bowman, um, about this topic that I brought up with you guys about um the way that affordability is measured. And, you know, part of our discussion was uh was sort of filled with their frustrations because, you know, they're in field every day doing this. And I totally understand that, you know, they got, you know, live mouth idealist me coming in and seeing if we can make some positive change. But in the end, I think, you know, we came we we kind of brainstormed a couple of things and we talked a lot about all the issues and a couple of things that came up is uh sort of restructuring the way that affordability is measured. Possibly through through the 40 B process. And then setting, you know, maybe proposing setting up a set, a type of legislation or something that they can consider in Boston where municipalities would have an ability to proportion some funds to lower income people and then people in the sort of middle brackets. But, and you know, again, it remains that it's it's, you know, the incomes in in this town do not take into consideration all of the people who are homeowners in this town or present in the town. And neither does it take into account real estate prices. It's a real big problem. That they don't really, I mean, I don't know that they really think about too much because they've got, you know, they have their own problems and they're trying to, they're working in the in the day to day and the real life sort of experience of having to deal with all of the regulations that are in place now and all the limitations that are put in front of them. But I think, you know, they would be open and supportive of something that maybe, you know, my my vision, just so you guys know, is just to have a document that we can present to people and including the press. So so we can sort of get discussions around this topic out there. So people are thinking then because it doesn't still, doesn't make sense to me to limit that our housing um efforts to just the amount of money people make because if I didn't move to this town, I recognize it. If I didn't move to this town, people like me didn't move to this town, people would be able to because they would be making money and the price of real estate would be more, they would be making money that would be commensurate to the price of real estate without people like me and and second homeowners and other people from um, you know, seeking new homes, driving up the price. So it's just like, it's a, it's a tough weird thing and you know, the discussion wasn't great, in my opinion, but because it's just so complicated. And there's so many things in place and now it's, you know, Jane told, I keep telling you guys that the HUD budget has increased by 60 million in the last 40 years. Jane says that she's had a an increase of like $25,000 over the last 40 years for rental vouchers.
Oh. Yeah.
There is just no support at all for probably the what I would consider is the biggest problem in the country. There's just no support and then nobody's talking about it. In Washington, nobody talks about this stuff. It's just kind of like, what's going to happen, you can be this year?
Pedro, in terms of of sort of, you know, rural, urban communities, was there any discussion? And Chris, you've got some insights into the the governor named like a a rural community czar or something that is supposed to be a point person for some of these policy-related items that are impactful in rural communities?
It was brought up and and the new vice chair of the HCD was also brought up.
Okay.
They also talked about how more helium or administration lieutenant governor inclusion are very, very, you know, they don't say that housing is their priority, but apparently they do have it as a very, 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 very top priority. And the organizations are are seeing that from from Boston. But I think it's at this point, it's not, you know, it's not a policy-driven kind of interest. It's just a more funding sort of interest. And maybe, you know, even getting involved with the boards like ours and loosening up zoning and this and the other, similar to what Hopeful tried to do. But yeah, it came up and um that rural rural policy advisor position, um I don't know that there's a real um description of what they're supposed to do, but, you know, they're they're optimistic that they can, they also, you know, they're optimistic that Berkshire County is going to be on the radar. And they they kept saying that Berkshire County is on the radar, that Boston recognizes what happened and what happened in the Cape. And that Berkshire County is on the radar to avoid what happened in the Cape. So, you know, there were some things that they mentioned that I thought were interesting and kind of hopeful. Uh, but in general, there's just not enough funding and the policies are, you know, frozen from 1960s.
Uh huh. Yeah, I mean, that sounds like a multi-pronged issue, right? There's got to be a um education that happens and then and then if it has to change in Boston, then we've got to get legislators on board and
Yeah.
You know.
I see an opportunity with Senator Mark because he's been, I don't know if you've seen him, Malcolm, but I've seen him three times at the BRPC meetings and he's only been a senator for like six months, I think, or less than that. And and he's very, you know, connected to this area. I mean, he's he himself, I think, had some um some housing issues in his youth. So he's, you know, he's very attuned to this topic. And that's why I think it's a good idea to, you know, put things on his desk, give him things to think about. I think all these policymakers just need to think differently. It's it's about, it's that time, just like we think differently, you know, it's time to think differently about parking. It's time to think differently about what we do most everything, in particular the things that are failing. It's my interest and if if anything comes out of it, I hope I can get the support of this board to just to, you know, push something onto somebody's desk.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, anything else?
No.
Do we have a town planners' report?
Uh, no, no, nothing specific. I think maybe next time I'll come back and update you on a few initiatives, uh, maybe specifically list them on the agenda so that we can discuss them if needed. Um, no pending um, site plan applications. We will have a special permit review at the next meeting for a zoning board of appeals special permit. Um, but not a lot of other projects percolating at this time. Thank you, Federal Reserve. Nothing, nothing on North Plain Road.
Thanks, Chris.
No, the appeals group just just ran, so.
All right, do you have any citizens that want to speak? It doesn't look like anybody's in the room with you guys.
No, there aren't any.
No citizen speaking? All right, then we will adjourn at 6:59.
Great, thank you.